It's 5:00 PM, Monday, August 21st, 2023. I called to order the Village Board of Oregon. First item is roll call, please. Second item, roll call, please.
Bilo?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Oh, my gosh, where are my people? Van Kampen?
Here.
Who else did I call? Kerstorfer and Manke.
Here.
Here.
Fashion is absent. All my people are gone.
Okay, we're off to a good start.
Yeah. It's gonna be bad tonight.
Item four, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items.
Sorry.
See?
It's always the minutes.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a night.
Always the minutes. Okay, item three, pardon me. Approval of August 7th, 2023 Village Board Meeting Minutes. Thank you for your motion to approve, both fellow Ys, Amanda and Derek. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for catching my ear. Item four, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Anyone for public comments? Oh, thank you. Moving on. Item 4B, presentation of the village's financial advisor, Ellis, regarding the village's 2023 Financial Management Plan Update. Dave and Lisa.
Well, I confused you with the people. You all disappeared.
You're probably wondering how come I'm here again this, this time, but you guys get to see me quite a bit this year. I brought with me Lisa Trupetowski. Usually, when we do the utility portion of the financial management plan, I kind of muddle through it. So I brought somebody with me that actually knows what they're talking about and will be able to answer all the questions you might have that might be a little bit outside of my realm. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna have her start because you never hear this part where it's actually presented the way it should be. And so I'm gonna let Lisa start with it.
Okay, great. If you want to advance to the next slide. So while we're here, we are, you guys are contemplating a very large capital improvement plan for both the water and sewer, and so we're here to determine the fiscal sustainability for that. The utilities are an enterprise fund, which means they operate more like a business. They have to run 24/7, and they are very capital intensive. So it's very expensive to put in the assets as well as maintain them. So you have volatile operating and maintenance expenses. So we take a historical look for five years. We don't want to just take a look at the last year because of those volatile maintenance expenses. And then we make a projection with the, your capital improvement plan, as well as evaluating your operating and maintenance depreciation, and when it comes to water, your pilot payment. And then we put those increases into a rate impact that shows the average residential user and what the dollar amount is on those percentage increases. So first, we'll look at water. I was here in the spring to present what we were going to file for your conventional rate case. Your last one was about, just under 20 years ago, and since then, you have added utility finance plans of over 85% increase. Your operating and maintenance average expenses, as well as your depreciation, has increased 95% since then. Your water sales are up 45%. And then your last annual report, 2022, was below benchmark at 2.35%. You did complete one simplified rate case since your last conventional rate case. When we filed the conventional rate case, it was at just under 36%. After we filed, there were some changes, transferring some utility financed assets into contributed, as well as when we had the application, the rate of return was at 6.5%. When they released their revenue requirement, it was down to 6.2%. So overall, it is gonna be just over 31% increase. Looking at your historical rate performance on a cash basis, it is a larger increase because you have a larger amount of cash-funded capital as well as debt. So it's looking at all your actual cash expenses. When you look at the PSC method, which looks at your operating, maintenance, your pilot, your depreciation, and then that net investment rate base, we're showing that 31% increase.
Thanks.
Yep, sorry. Looking at the financial indicators, you do have a healthy reserve. Note that 2022 is skewed because you do have leftover bond proceeds. We do have a concern of your aging system, and that is why you have a larger capital improvement plan for the water. So your operating ratio, including depreciation, is below that benchmark. This table shows a, in total, your capital improvement plan. Your current system has an undepreciated value of just over $7 million, and with this plan, you're looking to add just under $20 million, or a 182% increase into the value of your system. The revenue debt line, which most of your projects were identified to issue revenue debt for, we did use cash reserves to downsize that. So the total on that line is just over $17 million. The actual amount that you would borrow would be less than that because we would be using any cash, keeping in mind that we want to maintain a certain level of benchmark cash reserves. So this is your long-range cash flow analysis. So 2024, we're showing that 31% increase for your current conventional rate case. We are trying to maximize the use of simplified rate cases, so you'll see 2%, 3% inflationary increases. After that point, you would have to do a conventional rate case to maintain debt coverage. As you can see, kind of towards the bottom, if you can go to your debt payments increase to just over $1 million about that time, so you need that increase to maintain that debt coverage. And then this is that impact on the average residential user, just focusing on the water side. So for that, sorry, I'm gonna have to get the dollar amount. You're just under $20 million of capital improvement. To fund that, you have a $21 increase, monthly increase over the planning period. And then we have a rate comparison, just this is Dane County. So the very bottom orange highlight is where you're currently at. The middle is with that 31% current conventional rate case. And then over the whole planning period, that 95% increase cumulative is where it would be at. And that's in comparison to the other communities, and that is sorted, there's an error on this slide. It is actually sorted by the 12,000 consumption column, and note that this is listed quarterly because not every utility bills monthly. So they, when you get the information from the PSC, it is by quarterly billing. So again, we're using the max of the simplified rate cases, and then you would have to do that conventional rate case based on the current plan. We are trying to minimize those rate adjustments by using your cash reserves, but being mindful of that benchmark and policy that you have in place. This does consider that there is no impact fee adjustment, which the village is planning to do an update on, updated study, and then you would have more cash available to apply towards those projects. As well as noting with impact fees, those are considered contributed. So as contributed, when you're looking at a conventional rate case and you're determining what percentage increase you need, those assets that are funded with impact fees would not be considered. So your impact for a increase by the PSC would be less because those are contributed assets. Also, we don't have any plans for new users when you're looking at the revenues, so it's just maintaining flat revenues in that plan. Again, so that alternative is to adjust those impact fees. Looking at the sewer utility, here's their historical sewer rate performance. And again, based on a cash basis, you're, you would have a larger increase due to those cash-funded capital debt payments and your operating and maintenance increases. Looking at the, I'm gonna go, the utility basis, so based on the PSC, it would be a lower amount of increase. And we also point out that if you look over to the right, removing that rate of return component, you are still 15% below your rate adequacy. Historical financial indicators, again, you do have health reserves. 2022 is inflated with a leftover bond proceeds. Very much concerning for your aging system with sewer, you can see that all years are below that benchmark when you're looking at your operating ratio, including depreciation. Again, here's a summary of your capital improvement plan. Your undepreciated value of the system is just under $15 million. Looking to add over $46 million of capital improvements, and that is a 211% increase on that. Again, we would be using cash to downsize the debt. So you see that total debt, that's $40 million, that would be lower because we would be using cash reserves. The long-range cash flow analysis, focusing, if we could zoom in, for the years 24 to 2026, to get to a point where you're meeting debt coverage, you would need, with the way the plan is currently, about an 89% increase. And we staggered the increases to wrap around what the current water is, so that each year it's gonna be increasing about the same. So the impact to an average residential user would be the same. So that's why these percentages are the way they are.
Anything more on there?
No. The sewer, the impact on average residential, so the change over a monthly bill over the planning period is a total of over $43. And then if you want to just scroll up to the right a little bit, we can show how, so doing those percentages the way we did for the sewer, you see that the yearly increase to the average residential user would be $120 over three years. We have some sewer comparisons. So right now, you're currently about, for the average, $20, $25.62 per month with the wastewater treatment plant project, that would bring, that 89% would bring you to $48.42 a month. And over the whole planning period, the 168% cumulative increase would be $68.69 per month. So you'd still be lower than Belleville and Brooklyn, Stone is, is lower. And this, looking at this, that doesn't consider what increases that they may have in the future. So again, this plan identifies minimum rate adjustments for debt coverage by using those cash reserves. And then again, we structured the rates around the water increase. This does not consider any connection fee increases, which you plan to update the study. And again, no, no, no new users for your revenues were added. And so we're just recommending you adjust your connection fees.
Questions?
All right. You sure you don't want to give her one question? Do you think she's done then? All right, so we're gonna jump into the governmental financial management plan, and I promise to be well short of last year's way-too-long presentation. So we have a PowerPoint presentation this year. This is really the report that we're providing. In talking to staff, we thought that, you know, this is an update of last year's, and so this is, this is how we're gonna present this year. So that first page, basically, we're gonna, we're gonna review some of the financial metrics that you proved in your financial policies that, that I believe Martin brought to the board, and I believe you approved that. We're gonna go through some of the long-range forecasting with the general fund, the operating, the capital projects, and the debt service. We're gonna talk a little bit about the framework of the 2024 budget and beyond. And then, you know, if there's things that you see in here, you know, this isn't a final document unless you're, you're happy with it. If there's things that you see, you want things adjusted, we're happy to make those changes and then send something back out. So just going over a couple of the, the policies that you have in place that really affect your rating. Liquidity, basically, when you look at your, your rating report, which was a part of the sale report that we provided, your liquidity ratio is, is above the AA medians, and you're rated a AA II, which is right in the middle of that, of that AA. So you're above that from a liquidity standpoint, which is great. Your growth metric is trending above the AA medians, showing that you're basically, your, your, your value is growing at a great percentage compared to other communities with the same rating. And then one of the things that you probably expect, because we have a lot of projects going on, you have a very aggressive capital plan, is that, you know, your, your debt is a little bit higher. Actually, that's pretty normal in Wisconsin, and so you're a little bit below the average medians on, on the leverage part. The next page just kind of talks out some of the policies. I do say that it says tax rate, and that is not true. So you have a debt capacity policy and a general fund fund balance policy, and we'll go over those a little bit more on the next page. This is really a graph showing what your fund balance has done over the last five or six years. We have a fairly healthy unassigned fund balance. Your policy is to be between 25 and 35%. As you can tell, based on the audited number, we're at 30%, which is right in the middle of your policy. I believe there's some things that kick in when you're above 30% as far as what you can use for, for capital. And, and so as you can see, there's, you've, you've got a pretty healthy reserve. Now, some of the things that you can see from the past, you can see we used to have a little bit bigger red mark on that, on that column. What that used to be is we used to have some significant advances with the TIPS, and those have been paid off. And so that has converted from being really no cash into cash because the utilities were, or the TIDS were able to pay that back. The next page is something that you probably saw quite a bit of when we were running numbers for you this spring. You did, you are, your, your policy is that you won't go over 75% of the statutory debt limit, which is 5% of your equalized value of the taxable property in the village. And you are right now, you know, you're well below that. At the end of '23, you're at 43% of that statutory amount, and, and the red line really is your policy. The next page is something that isn't as important as far as the debt. We don't, we don't look at the tax rate quite as much as we, we would have in the past, but the last couple of years, the equalized value in the state for residential has really blown up. And so where, a couple of years ago, we were kind of focusing on a rate, we're now kind of trying to stabilize the tax levy, which in, in essence, will stabilize your, your payments every year. So really, what this chart is good for is how much your debt capacity is growing for, growing by, and also what the levy limit will do. So we're using a pretty conservative growth rate, and we're using this basically for growth outside of a TIP district because anything that happens in a TIP district doesn't help your existing taxpayer on their tax bill. All that money, you know, anything that goes into the TIP district or any growth that happens there doesn't help pay for the regular tax bill. So we wanted to be conservative on that rate, so we used 2%. So just to kind of give you an idea of what we use for the general fund methodology for revenues, you know, really, in a governmental entity, raising revenues is almost impossible. You did a couple of important things in your last budget where you approved the wheel tax and the streetlight charge, and that's some of the only ways that you can actually raise revenue. Levy limits is pretty stifling, and as you'll see when we show you the, the chart, even though the shared revenues were bumped up this year and a little bit of an increase next year based on the state budget, you'll see that that only really helps you for one year. So when you get to that chart, you'll see that. The general fund expenditures, really, we have a, a chart that we use to take your line items and, and project them out over the 10 years. We're using 3% inflation on wages and, and other expenditures, and we bumped up health insurance by 8%. So going on to the next page really is a lot of numbers, but I'll point to, point out the things that really are important on this sheet. They're so small, I have to take off my glasses. So really, the things that are important on this is that fund balance policy at the bottom. You can see that right now, we're at, at projected at, well, actually, it's an actual right around 30%. Now, the reason that starts to go, go down over time is because levy limit law, really, the way we have this picked up is, is we're only allowing the levy in the library fund and the general fund to go up by. The library's getting 2% increase, which is the number we said was net new construction, and any other increase is going into the general fund for this forecast purpose. And as you can tell, if you look at the gray line where it says net change, you know, that extra shared revenue gives you, you know, the ability to not be negative on that line this year. But if we have that, those percentage increases in, in wages and others and, and health, we start to go negative right off the bat in the '25 year. So it's something you're always gonna be fighting. Hopefully, you know, they, they did something for us this year. Hopefully, they'll do something about the levy limit calculation and try to give you something that you can keep up with inflation. But at this time, the league only wanted to take on one thing at a time and didn't want to lose that because they took on both things. So I think the league will continue to try to do something with that. So like I said, the levy limit really shows that we've got things that we have to look at in the future. I will talk about things that you can do that, that, you know, can address those. Some of them are pretty, pretty harsh, but we'll, we'll kind of go through those. And then, you know, the, obviously, the fund balance gets used up, the more we, we don't have the revenues to cover. Library is just going up by 2%, but once again, they're not keeping up with their inflationary increases, so that fund also goes negative over time. We're gonna move into the debt area on page 12. Existing GO debt, that's your base case. Really, the way we read this, and I show you this all the time, but all your general obligation debt is on the left side. We have entities that pay for some of that, that's your TIDS and your water and sewer. But we also support the TID districts that aren't quite performing as well as they could. We're, we're getting some good growth in those, but at this time, the, the TID III and TID IV need a little bit of help to actually not have an advance. And one thing, when, when we're talking about rating agencies like Moody's, advances are one of the things that they really bring up all the time. They hate them. And, and really, they end up looking at that, and, and sometimes it leads to downgrades if you have used so much of your cash from the general fund to pay the bills for the TIDS that aren't performing as well. So that's what the darker, the black numbers are with the TID levies. And then really, once we get all those put together, we get what the net debt service is. And really, the, the big takeaway from this page is when you look at the levy change, we don't have a lot of flexibility to put the kind of borrowings in that you have currently structured over the next, or 10 years. And so really, what, what you'll see on the schedule or we show what we have to do to be able to afford those projects is we have to increase levy. And so we try to do that systematically over a number of years, which the next page is, is demonstrating. So what we did is we aimed at about $375,000 as a levy change each year. We had a little bit bigger bump this last year, but, you know, you're, you're basically, a year ago, I was here talking about the fact that, you know, we're gonna have 6.2 million, you were gonna go up to a levy about 6.2 million by 2031, and that was when you had $52 million in projects in that, your 10-year capital plan last year. This year, the plan is a little bit bigger, it's $62 million over the 10-year period. And, you know, we, we were able to, to structure the debt in such a way and provide flexibility to the future that you, you know, you're only going up about $100,000 from that, from that last year projection as far as where the max levy we think would be. You know, once we get through the big years, you've got some really big years coming up, the, the capital plan looks like it really kind of ratchets back down, and I think there, you know, once you get to that point, there's probably gonna be an opportunity to bring that levy down. It, it really depends on, you know, is there anything else big in the future that you might have to take on? I know you're doing a lot of your building projects now, so, you know, once you get past that period, it, you, there's probably a light at the end of the tunnel where maybe that can be ratcheted back down to a, a number that's less than that 6.3 million. The next page is that debt capacity graph, but this takes the whole 10 years into play. That 75% line is the one that's red. And, and I know that when Martin was working with you, that we were really bumping up against that red line. Then the DOR's new values came out, and all of a sudden, we got a lot of breathing room. So your growth really drives that line and, and keeps you from being right on top of that policy. So you have room as far as more projects, but you've got, you know, you know, as we talked about, you have a healthy CIP. So, you know, I think this is, this is really trending pretty well, and, and notice that, that when you get out to 32, 33, you're starting to come down, and that's where that project, that project list is actually coming back down to more of a routine type of a, a project list. Next page really talks about sort of the, the big picture look at this. You know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna show you on the next page is a graph that, you know, really takes the operating, which is the general and the library, that TID levy support, if we have any levy for capital, you know, what happens with existing debt and proposed debt. And then, you know, that'll kind of come into that levy, levy forecast for you. As far as the capital plan, you know, it incorporates all projects identified for borrowing. It has other things, you know, whether it's impact fees or, or cash that's available or, or grants. And it, it, the, what we've just showed you shows, it illustrates, it illustrates the impact of the long-term debt proceeds on, on really your policies as well. So the next page is really the, the conclusion of bringing everything together. We have the, the operations, the general fund and the library, and you can see what the levies are projected for the next 10 years. And really, when you're looking at the graph, the property taxes are going up, and the rate is kind of holding steady with that low growth rate that we have. So, you know, I think when we start getting past that, that last year on the, the property tax levy, I think you're gonna start to see what we want to show you, and it's like leveling out of the levy. Because really, at the end, when we get done with all these big projects, we ought to have a debt service levy that's stable every year, and the levy limits, unless they change, they're gonna make your operations be steady. And you're gonna end up with a flat tax levy and rate, pretty much. Actually, it might even be declining the tax rate as far as that goes. And that's what we want to see, is we want to get to a point where, when you come into the village hall, you've got all your nice new infrastructure, and everything's in place, that you'll have a, a stable tax bill, and people will be happy about the fact that the roads are getting done, the parks are getting built or maintained, and the buildings that are necessary are in place, your library, your senior center, and whatnot. So this really is the graph that kind of gives you an idea of where we're headed. And like I said, once we get past 33, I think we start to flatten out unless there's something big that's off the 10 years. So just a summary on, on page 17 is, you know, really, that average increase in levy from '24 to '33 is about 4.5%. The model that we created is compliance with your debt capacity and your fund balance policy. And even though the legislature provided you with additional shared revenues, which is great, we're still gonna, we're still gonna feel levy limit pressure in the future, and you're gonna have to, you know, be cognizant of that and determine what you're going to do. And I'll kind of walk through some, a summary of what those are. I do have a little bit more information on each of the things that I'll talk about behind that. I'm not gonna talk about each one of them just because, you know, we can answer those questions at another time. I don't want to take up too much time tonight. Next thing is really just kind of a quick levy limits. You know, the levy limits really kind of hold back your operations. If you have a levy in the general fund, the library and the capital fund, those are all subject to that, that, where your net new construction is really what allows you to go up. So those funds are really the ones that are affected by how much revenue you're able to raise. And then the GO debt is something that is outside of the levy limit, and we're, we're allowed to pay our debt payments. You know, the reason that, that you might get to a point where you can't do more debt payments is if you were like way up against your debt capacity and we couldn't borrow any more debt. So I don't see that being an issue here. Just a quick definition of levy limits, you know, you, your last year's levy can be increased by a percentage known as net new construction, which is what's getting put into the ground. which is what's getting put into the ground, less any demolition. The new law is going to change that, where it's going to be 90% of the new construction, the demolition won't be included. There's some levy limit classes that we're going to start putting on in the fall that Lisa actually organized, that we'll start to talk a little bit about how that's going to affect us in another year. That will not affect this budget. We're still going to be under the same levy limit rules this year. And the next year will be when we start to have more of an effect on that. As far as levy limits and the impact on the village, I think we showed that on pages 10 and 11, where the general fund is going deficit and eating up fund balance, and same with the library. So just quick budget guidance on slide 20. You know, obviously, the tax levy and the rate is something that we're going to be focused on. If you maintain what you're doing with your capital, you're going to see that increasing levy. The rate is something that I think, once you stabilize what you're doing capital-wise, that that rate will be a number you can actually zero in a little bit more. But right now, it looks like about a levy increase of about $375,000 takes care of what we need in the future, as long as interest rates don't do some major changes up. I don't think that's, we don't see that right now. I think they've started to get inflation under control, and rates haven't really gone too crazy this year. Things that might affect your budgets is whether you want to have new services or initiatives, but probably to fit those in your current budget, you'd have to go through something like a levy limit referendum to do that or find some way to charge for those. You know, what can you do as far as items that keep you under the levy limit? You know, are there things that you can cut that are levy funded that are current services? Do the residents, would the residents care if you cut back on mowing things? Or you maybe do a Madison where you're not plowing as much? You know, what kind of things will residents be more unhappy about? And if they really don't want to cut anything, then really, you know, really, that's, that's something that maybe the levy limit referendum would come into place if you need it. You do a great job of capital project prioritization. We were obviously back with staff showing you what the capital plan looked like and making it fit your debt capacity, so you're doing a great job there. You know, I think, depending on your thoughts on the debt plan and how this is affecting it, you know, this is definitely within your policy as far as debt capacity. But you also have to feel comfortable with where that levy is going. And we kind of show you what that levy probably needs to be to take on the type of a capital listing that you have. And then fund balance, you have a policy that says if you're over a certain amount, that you can use that towards capital or one-time things. And that's something where you had in the past and transferred money to capital to help actually reduce your borrowing. It also could be used to smooth out the debt levy. And it could be used for things like reassessments and one-time things like that. So you have a plan or a policy in place that kind of dictates what that's going to be. I think this is really the last section. I'm just going to go over the summary sheet here. There's more data behind this that kind of talks about what each one of these things are. We've talked about the granddaddy of a law of a levy limit referendum. I'm hoping that's the last thing you have to do. It takes a lot of work. People aren't excited about paying more taxes, but if you need to do it, a marketing plan in place to really sell why it needs to be done is something you're going to want to do if you ever get there. There's impact fees that can be used for certain things to generate cash, to actually reduce how much we're borrowing. You implemented the streetlight user charge and the wheel tax, so those are in place. Other things that you could think about are stormwater utilities, which, you know, basically takes that. It can be just the operating. It can be the operating and the capital that can be used. But instead of it being on your tax bill, it'd be a charge that you would charge not only to residents and businesses, but to tax-exempt entities as well. Kind of spreading out, you know, that, that cost and getting it off the levy. Transportation utility districts are really something that have been a, something that people want to get to, but there's been some challenges to it in the courts. A township recently got rejected on it because it really was a tax levy. But there is a village close to where we actually worked that is still in the courts. And so there's still a chance that the street maintenance and street construction could be something that could be put into a fee as well. We're still watching that, and if that becomes something that we're sure can be taken on, you know, that's something we're happy to get on a call with staff or educate the board on as far as how, you know, how that might help you ship things off the tax levy as well. And then things like payment in lieu of taxes, you know, if you've got businesses that are tax exempt, and they're using your services, and you have an agreement for them to pay for those, that's a way to also bring in money so that you don't have to actually use tax levy to pay for those as well. So I'm not going to go through all the pages behind this, but those are some of your opportunities as far as what you can do for alternative revenues. Actually, I think I lied. There is one section on your TIF districts. Sorry about that. All of a sudden, I saw these. Maybe you're aware, but on October 5th, we actually have a call with the joint review board, staff, and myself, and we go through the, what's happened in the TIF over the last year and then show them these reports. It's something we're required to do every year. It's a Zoom meeting, so you can call in if you want. But we'll just kind of quickly go through TIF 3. I won't go through too much detail. This district is really, really just paying off its obligations. It's really not taking, there's no more projects to be done. And so really, we're just trying to collect money. The tax levy support is helping that as well. And right now, we show that the TIF district has to close in 2033, but we feel that probably you're going to want to ask the joint review board for six years of extension, which is allowable because this district was created before the technical colleges got some of their tax levy pulled off the tax roll. So you have a standard amendment or a standard extension for three years and a technical college for three years. And even though we asked for that, that far, not the far right, but the last one that has that yellow box at the bottom, that shows of the tax levy support that we've given to the TIF district. We can't give back to the taxpayers that 740. Hopefully, you know, if you didn't do an extension on those, we would have, basically, the taxpayers would have contributed about $2 million to the TIF. And so keeping it open allows us to get the money back from the TIF. It also will provide you with a cash source that you might be able to use for some of your capital and reduce some of that borrowing. That's not built into the capital plan right now, so that's also a potential in the future. It's outside of your 10-year plan, though. Going on TID 4, this one has still quite a bit going on in it. That's the one where you have the Lake Stone Affordable Housing Project in it. That really is something that needs TIF assistance to actually have that come off the ground. And really, that's what drives us to the final year of the TIF district. You've already extended this TIF district six years. It's already been done. And so this one actually does close successfully in that final year of the extension. The last TIF that I'm showing you, because you'll hear about TIF 6 in a little bit, is TIF 5, and TIF 5 has actually been doing pretty well. You've had quite a bit of growth. There's more opportunities for projects, so even though this cash flow says you, you could close in '35, that would be if you don't do anything else. So if there isn't any other projects you want to do, and you just want to collect money to pay off your debt service or your municipal revenue obligations that are there, you could close in 2035. But the objectives of this TIF had a pretty decent-sized capital plan, and I think that staff and your board as well probably has more things that could be done in this district. So at this point, with the known things that we have, this district could close in 2035. Now I'm at the questions.
Amanda.
Yeah, so on the TIF districts, I know that there was a program that allowed municipalities to keep them open an extra year to put the funds toward affordable housing. Is that already incorporated in what we're seeing, or is that an additional year that we could add to each of these if we chose?
Yes. With the current law, you would, you would be able to, when you got to, let's say that this closed in 2035, you could close a district, you would keep it open for the affordable housing allowance. And what that does is you'll still have your audit, you'll still, anything that's in that cumulative column would get divided up between all of the taxing jurisdictions. But then you would have another levy, which, and this would be in 2036, you'd have $747,000 that you would put in a fund that you would use towards those initiatives. So you've got some time to think about what those initiatives are. You know, otherwise, you know, if you have another TIF district that does, does well, that you create, could be that you have one that goes faster. But that's probably the closest one that's going to give you that affordable housing money.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Phil, I had one quick question. Just on the two, on the utilities, the stormwater utility and transportation utilities, are those still, those still you require to take those off the levy?
The stormwater utility would be, the transportation would not.
Would not? Okay. Are they trying to close that? Are they trying to close that loophole?
I think they're trying to make it so you can't actually create one.
Okay. All right.
So stormwater is still one of the covered services. So we would have to go back to, I believe, 2013 and find out what we levy for stormwater at that point.
Net gain is really zero over, at least initially, correct?
It depends. It depends on if your stormwater's been consistent as far as the levy. If it, if it's lower in 2013 than, you know, 10 years later, whatever that difference is, you would actually be able to capture and use for other levy items. So it's possible that you would have some room from that.
Okay. Anybody else? No? I guess that's it.
Last year, I took more than this time just by myself.
Well, we thank you very much, Dave, for that.
We wanted it shorter this year. Am I upright awake?
Yep. Well, we're...
I was going to say, I'll just grab my stuff and come back to the chair.
There's only vouchers and consent agenda in between.
Okay. Let's stay on track, then. We'll go quick. Just take a moment. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,901,348. This will be a roll call vote. Need a motion? Jason and Amanda. Could call a roll?
All right. Is there any question? Do you want to do any questions or anything? No? Okay. Van Kampen?
Yes.
Beelo?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Kurt Storper?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 6, consent agenda. These were detailed in your packet. We're looking for a motion to approve. Lynn? And Jason? Questions? Derek?
Yeah, and item D, change order number two to the contract with Fisher Excavating. Jeff, are we able to return some of those materials that we purchased for that project? For Lauren? Sorry.
Yes. Yes, we are, and we've started to get those credit memos coming in. We're just holding them until we get to the end of the material shuffling process. But yes, we will be getting back credit without a restocking fee for everything that we didn't use.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Polls in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7. Is this where Dave is? Thank you. Item 7A1, planning commission, resolution number 23-29, resolution creating tax incremental district number 6, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries. And I guess Dave is on again.
I think this might be my last item on the agenda for the year. What do you think? It's been a busy year. So I'm going to present from the PowerPoint presentation. Is that in the packet?
Yeah, it should be in there. That's... Here.
Yep. So the project plan is what you'll approve tonight, so if there's anything that you saw when you read through this, you know, feel free to ask questions. I'm going to go through more of the high-level items that are in here. Jeff has me on the calendar of events, and we met with the joint review board on August 3rd, as well as we had a planning commission meeting where the public hearing was held. And just to kind of give you a flavor of what happened that day, my cheat notes. We basically went through what the process was with the joint review board and what their duties were. And really, what it is, is if they agree that the, without the use of TIF, that this project wouldn't go forward, that that's something that, you know, is one check mark. The second check mark is, does it bring value? Does it do some enhancement to property? And I think we checked that mark. And so what we asked them to do is if both of those first two items are something they agree with, then by signing on, they're really agreeing to be a partner in all of this. And so there's a schedule at the back of the project plan that shows you the taxes that will be generated on the TIF district. And those are the taxes that they'll forego because they've, they've agreed that without the use of TIF, that, that, you know, this wouldn't happen. So we're hoping that they're going to do that, and they did ask some really good questions. One of them was really, you know, what is the butt for? There was some conversation with the school district on whether, you know, the length of time that this land has not been developed was one of the issues. And I believe Martin did a great job of answering both the county and the schools as far as that being a true factor. Really, what you did, and something that is, we feel is a great thing to do because it gives you the support on the butt for, is you had a pro forma done by elders that said, you know, does this, is this developer actually asking for money that they need? And we go through all of their, you know, construction information and what they're asking for, and make sure that there really is a financial gap. And so really, one of the big things you've already done is really check that box, that there is a reason why this, this project needs TIF. So we answered that, and Martin sent out a nice one-page email to them, and he can share that with you if you're interested in that. Also, they asked, let's see, you know, what was the makeup of the development? And there's 58 apartments and 12 townhomes. And that really was the gist of what they talked about then. Then we went to the public hearing. There were no public comments. Nobody spoke on behalf of the public. The planning commission did ask a couple of questions, and, you know, was this property previously a TIF? And that was, the answer was no to that. You know, what is the revenue source for this? Is it ownership or is it rental? And it's a rental property, so that was one of the questions. And is the fact that we're really only doing a one parcel TIF unusual? And that is not an unusual thing in the state of Wisconsin. There's a lot of places that do one-off TIFs. This is your first, though. So we answered that question with it's unusual to you, but it's not unusual in the state. So as we went forward, we asked the planning commission to consider a resolution, which basically recommended the TIF to you. And they passed that, that resolution, and I believe, let's see here. I think they approved it 6-0. They had, it was subject to getting the opinion from the attorney. I think that's right. And that opinion is in the project plan that you have, so we do have everything we need for you to consider this tonight. That resolution being passed is why we're here tonight, so you can take a look at this and see whether or not it's something you want to move forward on. The next page actually has kind of a TIF 101. If you want me to go through what the life of a TIF district is, I'm happy to. Otherwise, we can keep moving, and I can just hit the highlights on the bottom of this page. Anybody want to hear the? I'm okay speaking less, by the way. So the only thing on this page is really, this district is created in '23. It'll end in 43. The expenditure period is five years prior to that termination date in '38. So on August 21st of '38, that's the last time you could do any projects. So if we were to amend this TIF district and add territory to it, that still keeps that date at 2038. Because we're approving this district later in the year, you are eligible to collect another increment in 2044. The next page is just the, really, the map, and I think probably you all know where this is. It's, it was current, it was two parcels. Is it now one? Has that happened?
Yes.
Okay. So this is now a one parcel TIF. There's a bigger map on page 7. If you want to see that a little better, I know it's scrunched into here, but it's hard to fit it otherwise. The purpose of this district is really to provide that financing tool to allow the affordable housing development to be constructed. What this TIF district really does, and most of the project plan or the project cost is, is incentives so that they can accomplish this project. And we're doing that basically with other revenue sources, which is the low-income housing tax credits. And if you remember from the Lake Stone project, we really, the tax increment is really important with those low-income housing because really, it's something that's integral to, I think, a matching effort that you have to do for those projects. So it's something that's normal when you... that you have to do for those projects. So it's something that's normal when you're using that kind of a, a funding source. The required finding is that less than thirty-five percent of the area in the district is, is newly platted. And this is based on an opinion by the village attorney, is not newly platted. So there actually is zero percent. So that's not a factor. And there has to be two uses. And we have a building that's going to have commercial and residential in it. So that accomplishes that. The next page is your, your project cost. And really all we have is the incentives and then annual administration. So about three-point-one million potentially if this district stayed open until the bitter end. The next page shows how the value from the apartments and townhomes will come in. About twenty-five, fifty, and twenty-five percent is what's projected on here for a total of about eight-point-nine million dollars. I've also, as you notice, there's page numbers on the top of the sheet. So those are the page numbers in the project plan if you wanted to go to those pages to, to see what else is related to that. The next page just is how we calculate the increment that is generated off of those new values. And, you know, the, if you're using a nineteen-dollar tax rate, really you get about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of increment each year, which if this was open till the end, would be about three-point-four million. That goes on to the next page, which is the cash flow that shows that this is actually something that, that appears that it will work based on the revenues and what we're, what we're distributing and in revenue obligation. You can see the tax increments on the, on the left. The, the municipal revenue obligation, which is really what we agreed to in our development agreement with the developer on how we were gonna pay them out a, a certain percent of the, of the increment. There's some administration that we're, we're taking on. And when you look at it, we, we start with a, actually, I think my s... This is missing the twenty-four thousand, isn't it? I must have the wrong schedule in here.
I think it's right in the plan, though.
Yeah. So I mean, in the project plan, I thought that looked weird. We actually do have fees in creating the district that the developer did provide ahead of time. So there, instead of starting out with that first year of, of deficit that says twenty-four thousand, the project plan actually shows that we have the money that, to pay for that. So we don't actually start right off the bat with twenty-four thousand dollars of deficit. We actually just have a year or so where we don't have increment. We do have a little bit of an advance or, or interfund from the general fund, cash from the general fund. But that gets paid off down to some fairly insignificant numbers. We're in positives by twenty-thirty-three. And we close potentially in twenty-four to two, as long as the value comes in. You know, we'll only pay them that certain percent of what that increment is generating. So that'll be calculated out once, once we have a better idea of what their value is gonna be. So as long as everything on this page actually happened, which is a projection, so as my old boss would say, projections are always wrong. You know, we're still, we're still, you know, you're still not, you do not have to pay them the entire amount on the MRO. They only get a certain percentage of the increment. So if the increment doesn't come in as high, they get less. It still pretty much puts you in the same spot where you'll close at the same time, close to that. So that's kind of a, a real quick overview of what the district is about. I'm happy to go into the project plan. Obviously, I had to to, to show you the right schedule, but happy to answer anything.
Questions for Dave? Amanda?
And just to, to clarify with, with TIDS, anything within the half-mile radius is something, like if a business was gonna build within that radius, we, they could apply for TIF financing? Is that?
That is not, that's not true.
Okay.
So if we were gonna get a business that wanted to build something close to this TIF that was like touching the parcels that we have, we could amend the district. Or we could, we could do kind of a, what's called a parcel bridge and get over to that parcel. But it really needs to be in the TIF to get assistance. Now, what you can do in the half-mile rural area is you can do infrastructure. So one of the things we considered when we were putting this together is, wouldn't we have enough revenue kept by the village to maybe do some of the street and that? And, and we kept it out because really, if, if you look at the bottom line of the cash flow, it's a little skinny. And so we'll come back if we have new development. And we can actually put some of that money to work to do some of the roadwork. But that's the kind of stuff that you can do around there is, you know, if you have something run through it, maybe a trail or utility improvements or something like that, those are the kind of things that the half-mile rural are about.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? None? Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve as presented. Jason and Derek. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Item seven, seven-two, A-two, certified survey mat creating two lots for a zero-lot line, pre-existing twin house located at seven forty and seven forty-six Thompson Drive. Let's get a motion on table first here, if we could. Derek and Amanda. And we have, this was in your packet. Do you have anything to add, Elise, or no? Okay, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eight A, unfinished business assigned for discussion, possible action. A, resolution number twenty-three dash thirty, adopting the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-three, kept on improvement plan and twenty-twenty-three financial plan update. Some comments? There, I think there was a pretty comprehensive memo, but...
Yeah, this basically closes the, closes the loop on the, the CIP process and the FMP that was just presented. Gives the, the village board's final blessing on, on these two documents. And then we take that information and proceed to the operating budget next month.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve. And it looks like we're approving both the annual update to the ten-year capital improvement plan and the annual update to the financial management plan.
That's a single motion?
Yes. Tom and Jason. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight B, resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-one, adopting the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-five, village board strategic plan. Again, I think we'd get a motion on the table, please. Lynn and Amanda. Okay. Discussion. Art? Do you have anything to add?
No.
No. Discussion? Comments? Edits? Updates? Personal preferences? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, new business assigned for discussion, possible action. A, review amending the village board handbook to establish policy regarding the standing reports item from the village board members under reports of committees. We had a detailed, um, memo from Martin on this. Anything to add?
No, I think the only thing that I would say is, is like I said in my memo, when we're talking about generic agenda items, you just need to be careful of the open meetings law. Making sure that we're giving the public notice of what the board is gonna be talking about.
Okay, so, uh, comment, uh, well, um, I'll go ahead. It, it sounded, it sounded pretty plain for me, to me from the manner that this is probably not a good idea and that we should stay away from it. But, oh, discussion. Amanda, please.
Yeah, so I think the thought behind this, I don't want to speak for Carleen, but speaking from myself, I, I like this idea just because it can be very difficult to stay on top of the things going on. And I, the point of it isn't to generate discussion so much as to just keep board members apprised of what other committees are doing, just saying, you know, we had a transportation committee, this is what we talked about. And just, like, just to keep people in the loop of what's happening, because there's so many different committees now that it's, it's hard. I, I don't think that the point is to generate discussion. I think we could just maybe have a note even in the, uh, the agenda, like, these are not, these aren't items for discussion. It's just a quick update from the chairs of the various committees of, you know, keeping other people in the loop. That was kind of my thought about it.
Lynn?
I also agree with Amanda. I, um, I appreciate the memo. I didn't really think about that open meetings law implication. So I really appreciate the research that you had done on that. But I do also agree that just even having something written down, I know that those committees are in pretty constant contact with you, Candy. If I'm wrong about that, please set me straight. But as far as setting agendas and sending those things out. So if after a meeting, they felt just to send it to you based on like what they had done or if there was anything of note. I also noticed in your memo, Martin, that you had said something about the village administrator report. I will just speak for myself that I find that fascinating. I like to see, not in like a, I want to know what you're doing, but I just think it's really interesting, the work that is on your plate. And I, I, as a board member who's not here, it's really nice for me to get a quick glimpse of like what has been going on, what's on your plate, what we could do to be helping you, things like that. So, yeah, again, not so much discussion, but more just in, information.
Jason?
And rather than, uh, my idea is rather than adding something to the report or to the agenda that could get us in trouble with open meetings laws, just really encouraging committees to turn in their minutes. Because that's how I keep, keep up the date if they're there, is reading the agendas. Like, the public art committee doesn't have much of a packet, but if there's minutes there that are on the website, I try and keep up with that. And if there's a, because we as village, village board members go to these things, it could be helpful during our comment time to say, hey, the public art committee, I'd say, has some important stuff coming up. I'd encourage people to read the minutes from the last meeting. And, and Martin, would that, that, that would keep us in line with the open meetings law, correct? It, it, we wouldn't have that problem, the problem that we would have that you lifted up.
I think the risk is lessened, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Derek?
So in, in light of trying to keep within the open meeting laws, the spirit of everything, I agree, I appreciate the intent of why this was brought forward, but I, I don't see it necessarily as working. Would this be something where we could just put the minutes from everything and the reports of the committees at each meeting? And at that point, you can stay as up to date as you want. If the minutes are there, feel free to read them. And they'll be, they would be in the packet. As far as the village board comments on that, based off what Martin said, I would think that if there's anything in those minutes that you wanted to bring up, I would say probably do it under future agenda items as opposed to village board comments because that way you can just, you can talk about it as much as you want later. I guess that would just be kind of my thoughts on how to proceed with this potentially.
Can I?
Please.
Kind of add on a little because I, I'm hearing, you know, I'm, and I'd like to, I mean, I think the idea behind this was just a space on the agenda to, to have people do quick stuff. I, I'm not looking for a full report of minutes. I, nobody has time to go through every minute of every committee. Like, the whole point is, you know, like a sentence or two. I'm talking like an update, you know? And ninety percent of the time, like transportation committee, for, I'll just give an example, like working on the, the grant thing. You know, I might, or I might have nothing to say, right? Like, whatever we're doing, just, just a short thing or, hey, we still need members. We're still looking for members. Just like an opportunity for people to comment on the, the committees that they're part of and, and if they have any kind of announcements about not, not so much... I don't, I don't know how to put it, but just like having a space on the agenda for that as opposed to having to do it. I mean, we, I suppose we could do it under board comments, but...
We may, that may be eliminated tonight.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for a way to have a short space, just something that triggers like, oh, yeah, I was gonna mention that this, something, you know, about public safety or something about whatever the topic is. That was kind of just my, to have a space and it might be nothing to report, nothing to report. But just having a, just a time for us to do that.
If you don't mind, uh, um, I'm a little concerned about a couple of sentences turns into a discussion. And then we're, again, we're, you know, getting, getting, looking at a potential problem. I, I do, um, would there be a prohibition of any kind of distributing the minutes to board members via email? No. So I, I think that would be a step further than where we are right now.
I'll say, oh, sorry. I said the, the minutes are on the website, too.
Right, right.
And, yeah, they're on the website after the committee approves them.
I think that the, well, you'd have to stay, in order for that to work, you'd have to stay in tune when the meeting, when the minutes actually hit, hit there. And I don't, that's not that, I mean, predictable, is it?
It's monthly.
Yeah. And, but do you typically from the committees get the minutes like quite, you know, right after the meetings or?
Well, we don't put them on the website until they're approved by the committee itself.
Okay. Okay, um, I think Derek and then Tom.
Would it be possible to get the draft minutes? Because if we're looking like a month later for the minutes to be approved, it would be nice. And maybe a little bit more timely just to get the draft minutes is just kind of a general overview of what's going on.
Yeah, we can do that.
And I would also say kind of to Amanda's point of saying a couple of sections on putting, would the, putting the, uh, the minutes within the reports of committee then allow for just brief discussion or a brief sentence based on what the minutes said?
Yep.
Would that allow for that discussion without circumventing the open records?
That sounds like the same issue, but I'm not an attorney.
That's a good question. And I think as Martin memo outlines, it's, it's very much a gray area in terms of what's on the agenda, what you're supposed to be discussing and what turns out to be spontaneous discussion amongst the board during that time. Right? The purpose of the agenda is to set out what the board is planning to do in terms of discussion or action. And just by leaving it open as comments is questionably lawful, is the best way to put it. And that's what I mean by that. And, but there's a good distinction about, between, you know, what the purpose of the meeting is and the flow of information from and between board members, right? You always want to be careful about, of course, emailing things, but there's a way to send things to Martin and distribute that such that all the board members have the information, whether it's in the packet or if it's in a separate communications, so that everybody's on the same page of it as far as what's happening with committees and boards and such. That's not necessarily taking place in the, in the meeting itself.
Tom, I think you were next.
I guess what I'm hearing is I wouldn't right now be comfortable with big adjustments to the agenda. In general speaking, it sounds like there's, um, I like the idea of put, of push communication in relationship to minutes. So yes, it's available, but maybe when you post that draft agenda out there, then it becomes a push and like, oh, and here it is now. As opposed to expecting me to check every day to see which minutes have been added and which ones haven't. I mean, that's just...
Well, in, when we, when we push out an agenda, it usually includes the last meeting's minutes. So you're getting, when you're, when you're, um, when you select the, from the list that you can be notified, if you're, if you are to get everything on the village, all of the committees, you would get those minutes because they're usually in the agenda to be approved.
Derek?
I'm just saying, going down this rabbit hole of how we can circumvent this, I think really the, as opposed to putting this on the staff to email us minutes and update this or that, I think it might just be more incumbent upon the village board members to get the information that they need to, to Martin in a timely manner so he can actually put it on the agenda as opposed to try and circumvent the open, open meetings, the intent of it, such as it is. I understand that Carleen entered this with the best of intentions, but I think that that's the easiest way probably for us to steer clear of sticky legal situations.
Candy had something to add?
And I will, I will say, as we're looking at new websites, um...
When, when meetings and things are uploaded, it probably will be even a faster communication process as we move forward as well too.
Lynn.
Yeah, along Derek's lines, I wonder if it's just, I mean, in some ways, a simple fix for this could just be that we let committees know that when they're done with a meeting, if there's something that the board should be aware of to, to get that to you. So that almost essentially every committee meeting ends with a, are there any things we need to put in the agenda for the board to see? If not, here you go, here's our agenda. If so, here's our agenda and the three bullet points we'd like to put in the board packet. Cause my understanding is that when it's in the packet, the public is aware that that's happening and that that is what will be discussed. It's the like, oh, that came to me in this moment that is tricky lawfully, correct? I'm no lawyer. I watch a lot of TV, but.
And, and that, that is how it occurs right now. So even on this agenda, we have the two items that came up from plan commission. Those are things that were notified to us to put on to the village board agenda. The public art committee had a donation that went, went under the consent agenda. The public art committee let us know that they need to push that up to the village board. So that is what, is what happens when there is business that needs to get to the village board. There is either a mechanism of you have a staff member who is assigned to that committee or the chair of that committee is notifying us that something needs to be pushed up.
So it sounds like there, there's a process in place addressing what you're talking about and, and it sounds like if, if we were just all of us sign up for e-notify for all the committees, we will get the agendas with the previous month's minutes. Now there is a lag there, but at least we're getting something every month. Does that, that doesn't require any action? We won't violate any laws because it's public record. And there won't be any discussion because you'll be getting the information yourself and it will be coming through an email. That's one idea. And that requires no more, no action of this board. I'm open to more comments.
That makes sense to me. I guess my question is, is what are we willing to do with the items that are currently on the agendas as far as village board comments, administrator comments?
Well, I wonder if we could move past this first one thing first. Any, any, everyone good with that? Any objections?
Well, I seem to be overruled.
You can, you can put a motion on the table if you want.
I'm just gonna.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right.
I tried.
Derek, you started a new discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that just kind of leaves those items pretty much from the sound of Martin's memo need to be taken off the agendas, which means we probably have to go through the chapters of the village to get that removed from there as well, I would imagine.
So those ones are on there just by practice.
Okay.
So they've just been carried over as a practice. So if there was a direction from the board to not do those anymore, then that would be just a simple action at that point.
I guess are, are, are we?
Village Administrator Report.
Department heads, village board comments. So are we concerned about that? Kind of skirting the open meetings laws? I guess that's a question for the other Derek.
Yeah, Derek, can you rephrase that again? I'm sorry.
Are we concerned about those pieces of the agenda, kind of skirting those open meeting laws? Do we need to remove that from?
I think 10D and 10E are probably the most problematic. The village administrator report is, is problematic as well, primarily because it just refers always back to a general report that Martin creates that can include a lot of different information. Ideally, the agenda would say exactly what it is that that officer was reporting so that the public knew what they were supposed to be coming in to, to hear about. Like for example, Lauren's report is a good example of here's exactly what I'm going to be talking about. Chief's report as well, but general village board comments is, is so ambiguous as to not give anybody reasonable notice as to what's actually going to occur during that period. And so that's, those are probably the, the two most problematic ones.
I have a question about that.
Please.
So is with village board comments. I'm trying, you know, usually the types of things that happen during village board comments are like, hey, kudos to that staff member or hey, there's an event coming up or just sort of a general announcement. Like legally, is there a problem with those types of statements? Have we been doing it wrong all this time? I mean, or, or is that like, is that the gray area you're talking about? Cause we're just making an announcement about an upcoming event or something. How, how does that play in?
I mean, the problem is more about the formal mechanism of what you have on your agenda and what's taking place at the meeting. And if you, what you're doing is not properly noticed on the agenda, then it's a violation of the open meetings law. Now, will any DA bring a violation because you gave at least kudos one day? Probably not. But if we're just doing things by the book, I think that's, that's the point that Martin's trying to make is technically we should be clear about what it is we're going to be doing on the agenda, making sure that we have a space for that. And so if there is something, for example, if a committee chair has something that they need to raise to the attention of the board, they do so in advance and it gets put on the agenda and you can have that discussion, give an update if you want about what happens at the committee.
Jason.
So I, I will say, I, I, I'm happy we're not creating more gray area. But I am comfortable with the level of gray area that we currently have. If we wanted to trim more, I wouldn't pitch a fit, but the prob, actually having, this hasn't created a problem for so many years. I don't see this as being a problem going forward. And it actually provides us with the opportunity to do things that we haven't figured out how to do. Well, we haven't done efficiently in otherwise. So, so I'm, I'm okay with the, the gray here.
Lynn.
I have a question for Candy. If I ahead of time know that I want to give kudos to somebody or that I want to make an announcement, could I contact you to put that under village board comments? Has anyone ever done that?
I would say that you could, but I don't think historically it's ever been done, just because we've had this on the agenda for so long.
Just open. Okay.
But I don't know if.
So we have a process for village board members putting items on agendas through future agenda items. The tricky part with that is you come to me with an item you want to put under a report. And I know that the rest of the board doesn't want to talk about that. So now I'm, I'm stuck in a sticky situation of saying no to a board member or trying to make that judgment call. So ultimately you all collectively control the agenda. And you've done that through a policy which has been adopted. So we solve that issue by having that future agenda items where this is the time to bring up what you want on your agenda or do you agree or do you not agree? That way we're not putting staff in a position of trying to make those judgment calls.
Other comments? Amanda.
I'll just second what Jason said. I'm sort of comfortable with this level of gray area. I think we keep pretty well to very benign things under village board comments. But you know, if we start to get out of line, that's when we police each other and we're like, stop. And then we stop, you know, I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm good with leaving it, I guess.
Just make the observation that these things have been past practice. But once you're advised by the administrator or the village attorney that it's bad practice and you don't do that, and then someone decides to file a complaint with a district attorney, they will come back and say, well, you were warned. And that's my concern. So I, I, I feel we, we need to follow the advice of our administrator and our attorney. Derek.
I'd just say as, I, as much as I hate to say it, I, I agree with Phil on this. I think that it is very.
I want that on the next agenda.
Honestly, I think what we're doing here is, is ultimately an unfortunate step backwards. I, I don't like it any more than you do Amanda. However, I think as Phil said, we have been advised at this point by the administrator and the attorney that we should probably do something about it. As far as the level of what we want to do about it, kind of, I guess is up to us, but I, again, with Phil, we've been advised otherwise at this point.
Jason.
So question. For village board comments, I know we have these little paragraphs on here that say exactly what they're for. Could we, for instance, for village board comments, say, eh, this is an opportunity for village board members to lift up upcoming events? Say thank you to staff members and to other people in the, something legalese that would put it on there like, like that.
I think, you know, what that accomplishes is it just puts everybody on notice to refrain from, you know, going a bit too far. But it doesn't necessarily protect you. Because if, eh, eh, like we talked about, it's a gray area. Would it, would a DA take a case based on some announcements? Probably not, but who knows?
We don't want to be the.
We don't want to find out?
Right. Well, follow up question then, this is about, once again, my, our individual collective liability and it's what a $25?
$300?
$300 fine, okay. So once again, I'm willing to, I'm personally willing to chance that I can't speak for everybody on the board. Because it, it is benign and it is helpful and it is a gray area, but.
Derek.
I, I guess issue with that would be as well, I understand you get this at this point because you've sat in this meeting. The board member, I mean, we're all temporary placeholders here.
That's true.
Come the next election cycle, I may not be here, I may not be here. I mean, there's all sorts of things that can happen and the next person that sits in these seats might not know that. And then they're slapped with a big fine based on something that we did here tonight.
Further comments? Probably look for a motion there then to I, I'll make a motion. Motion to eliminate the village administrator report, the village department head, staff and/or consulting comments and the village board comments from the all future agendas. Derek seconded discussion.
Derek seconded?
Yes. Amanda and Lynn, I can see.
Yeah, sorry. I'm, so I, I get it and I want to protect the village, but I'm, I'm kind of with Jason on this. I just, I feel like if we go too much where we're like, okay, nobody can say anything that, you know, comes to mind about any event or anything that's coming up that, that, you know, if you have to put it on a future agenda item, the event might be passed or, you know, like things happen and I feel like basic announcements and that kind of thing, I don't want to eliminate that. So I, I'm a no on this. That's why.
Okay, Lynn.
So if we eliminate these reports, will we not get the chief's report? Will we not get Martin's re, like written report?
Yeah, well, that's one of my points in my memo too is I think it's a good conversation between myself. If this is eliminated, a conversation between myself and the board of what do you, do you want anything from me? In terms of activities and updates on things that are going on. What does that look like? Frequency? I mean, certainly it can be emailed. So I think that is a worthwhile discussion because obviously I want to be getting information that you guys find valuable and I also want to be spending my time wisely. So maybe this is overkill right now or maybe it's under. I don't know. We haven't had that conversation. So I think that's a worthwhile discussion if, if this is eliminated or even if it's not. But then I think if it is, if, if, if the comments D and E are eliminated, then I think we just need to make sure that we're being specific about reports. So as Derek mentioned, you know, Lauren's report here that we have on the agenda tonight is specific. A member of the public can look at that and say, oh, they're going to talk about the rape case. There's going to be a report on that. The chief of police report, calls for service from June 2023 and recent press releases, that's pretty specific. A, a member of the public can look at that and say, that's what they're going to talk, I know what they're going to talk about there. So I think that we would just need to be more careful of that and a little bit more proactive. And if somebody has, a department head has something they want to report on, we just need to make sure that we get it on the agenda. And same thing with village board comments potentially, although we just had a discussion about future agenda items. So we may need to think about a policy or procedure for, for village board members. If village board members want to make announcements, what is the scope of that? And what is the pro, the procedure for doing that?
My last comment to that is that that's where I am, that if I, I don't want to eliminate the written reports. I think that they're very informative to me and the public to see what you're doing. And when it comes to things like the needs that we have and the funding that we need for specific needs, to point to a report of what you're doing and the work that is on your plate. I think it's really helpful to see that in black and white. The verbal comments, I totally understand the sticky situation there, but I do think the written reports, at least for me, are very helpful.
I know, I'm probably going to speak in disagreement with the resolution currently before us. I would consider possibly eliminating D and E as a possible resolution. And then also then a direction to staff to work and develop a policy in relationship to the, to the providing of reports. And so get into that, that's our policy that, that if a staff member or if there should be a staffer or committee member, it will include specific details of what they will be discussing within the agenda that gets posted. I guess I'm just taking out the whole section seems draconian and I could probably vote against it at this point.
Just so I'm clear.
Your resolution.
On my resolution, you would strike staff and consultant comments?
I would.
And village board comments?
I would, under reports of village officer, you, your, your proposal was report, remove everything under D. Or under, under 10, excuse me. Is that correct?
I just have village board and department head comments.
Is it just D and E?
Yeah.
If it's just D and E, then I would probably be all right with that. But then I would also look for another resolution after that to develop policy in relationship to posting reports. And, or from, and if we can expand it to what the board could provide as far as reports. But develop a policy of some sort that we can refer to so that as you say, Derek, when somebody comes in the future like, well, here's what you can do to, to note it.
Derek.
This, I mean, this was just kind of making me think that under, we have item 11 announcement, announcements and miscellaneous business, which I think could be utilized to kind of stay within the realm of open meeting, meetings laws. If the village board members get the information to Martin to be included in the packet. However, we need to remove Martin from basically deciding what gets to be in there or not. It's basically would have to be if a village board member comes with, to you with an announcement regardless of what it is, that it gets put within the packet so he doesn't have to make that decision. I think that would, but again, it would be, the onus would be on the village board member to do so within a timely manner to make sure that it gets within the packet of information before it's released.
You know, that goes back to having a policy.
Yeah, pretty much.
So you do have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm working around that.
Which is to eliminate the village board and department head comments is what I got.
So just D and E?
10D and 10E, yeah.
D and E, right.
So, so.
No, I, I. No, uh, uh, my motion included the village administrator report.
It did?
Yeah.
Cause I don't have that.
Okay, I read it right off the memo. Uh, village adminis, what, what I read, any, I, I believe what I read was, village administrator report, village department head, staff, and consultant comments, and village board comments.
Sin, okay. 10A?
Well, I didn't look at them that way. Would it be, yes, be A?
10B.
It would be all, it all of 10.
10D and E, okay.
It would be all of 10. Okay.
So the village admin report, and the village board comments, and then the department head comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jason?
So, clarification from what, eh, my question is, is do we need a, an amended motion to put 11A be, eh, eh, and 11C, uh, where that'd be village board member announcement and appreciation? Trying to, trying to thread the needle here, because I get the importance of having the public informed and to know, but also the practical, yeah.
Amanda?
Yeah, so, so, as an example, I'll use, like, today is National Fentanyl Awareness Day. And I, I read an email about it this afternoon. It's way too late to put in the packet, but that's a public service announcement. I feel like that's something that people might want to know about, and like, you know, oh yeah, that's, that's a real problem. And just keeping it in people's minds, like, is just an announcement, right? Um, and if there was ma, if there's not that I know of, but if there was an activity around that, like, hey, I knew there was going to be a, a, an event, uh, an educational something that people would want to know about it, what is a mechanism that we could have for those types of announcements? And then kudos being a different thing.
I'm just reminded quickly, I know that someone wants, I'm reminded quickly what Derek said, though, is, is that we're setting a policy for not just this board, for future boards. Anyone want to comment? You want time to, to think this through and, and bring it back?
I think part of it is, you know, you need to think about what is the purpose of this meeting? You know, is it, you know, it's a village board meeting? Um, you know, you're the executive policymakers for the village, you're here to do the business of the village in these meetings, and to govern. And so, there may be some of these things that we need to find different mechanisms to get that information out, and maybe that's through email.
E notify.
E notify, uh, maybe we need to, we need to have, you know, if we don't have a village administrator report, okay, how can I get information to all of you to meet your expectations for my performance? Okay, so maybe it's, we want a quarterly report, and we want an email to us at the end of each quarter. So we just need to think of, what are things that maybe don't comport with the open meetings law, and maybe don't necessarily have a place on the village board agenda? Um, and then what are the other systems that we can use to get that information out?
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion seconded on the floor to, uh, maybe you could read that back to Candy there.
So I have that, um, Van Campen moved, seconded by Bilo, to eliminate 10A, which is the village admin report, 10D, the village board comments, and 10E, the village department head comments. What do you mean I switched it to?
D is village department, staff, and consultant.
Okay.
And E is village board comments.
We got that?
Martin is always correct.
Everything in 10?
No.
Not everything.
Further memo on 235, I'm reading, uh, the one, two, three, page 235, the fourth paragraph, essentially. Essentially, the motion is the first sentence.
I can't get into my computer to look.
Here.
See, I like the village administrator report, because it's in writing, and it's very clear what, what he's reporting on. That makes sense to keep, so.
Derek?
I agree that that makes sense to keep, however, I'll be voting in favor of this, to stop the bleeding, and then for future agenda items, I would recommend that we, we find a way to get that village administrator report to each of us, and by other means. And I, I feel it's valuable to the public, too. I don't disagree, but there are also open records requests that can be done to get that information to. I don't like the fact, having people jump through hoops like that, but, I mean, we've, at this point, been advised by the attorney that way, so I have our time arguing with that.
Well, we can, we can post, I mean, if we end up keeping the administrative report off, um, we can certainly, I mean, we'll talk about what your expectations are, but we can certainly post it online, too.
Okay, further discussion on the motion? Hearing on all, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
So there was two noes?
Two noes.
Right.
Thank you all. 9B, uh, review amending the capital ass, asset management policy to incorporate referring the village capital improvement plan to other vo, village boards, committees, or commissions. I think this is your, Derek?
Yeah, I mean, it is, uh, we discussed, I think, discussed it briefly last time. Um, I was just looking to get this in the hands of some of our committees, that it seemed pertinent information for those committees to get back to the village board, uh, with basic recommendations, as far as how that fits into the timeline. Um, I was just, bear with me while I pull this up. So, it looks like in late June, the capital plan worksheets are submitted to the finance director. I guess the meeting after that, I would, I would like those committees to be able to review those, especially the sustainability one, just kind of makes sense to me, to pick out the low hanging fruit on that, where we might be able to move things up or back, or if they have recommendations on equipment, um, just based on some of the sustainability factors. And then have a recommendation to the village board, as the village board begins their review. Um, it looks like early July and the mid of July is kind of my thought on that. And again, I don't necessarily, it's not necessarily putting the power within the committees to change the CIP, but it certainly gives them a look at it and allows them feedback to us to be able to, to do that.
Other comments? Lynn, please.
Uh, I like that proposed plan. I think the one thing that I want to reiterate or emphasize is making sure that committees understand that it is a recommendation. Um, kind of along the same lines of this previous discussion, in a different board, in different committees. I don't want it to be misconstrued that the committee would be able to determine when things get set on the CIP. So, just, uh, probably just a wording thing, uh, to make sure that committees understand that it's, it's just a recommendation as opposed to a decision.
Um, I'm sorry, is it someone else? Uh, I like the idea in principle, but I'm concerned about the, the, um, the mechanics of it, for lack of a better term. One is, uh, i- if we're to extend this to all committees, and we're looking at, by my mediocre math, close to 50 people, perhaps, that might comment on this. One would be, uh, the mechanism for getting those comments back to the board. Um, staff time involved in, in filtering through those potentially answering questions. Um, and again, uh, to aggr, address Lynn's point, that make it perfectly clear that, you know, they can make comments or perhaps recommendations, but, but they're not directly making input. Um, so, um, again, I, I think it's a good idea on its face, but I'm concerned about implementation. Uh, Amanda?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I like the idea. Um, I just always thought the way we sort of already did that was, um, as board members were all on committees. And so, you know, um, when, if, for example, the transportation committee is working on something, and I think it's going to be a capital project that might come up, that's when I would speak up and say, hey, I, we want to get this on the capital plan, so that, just put it on your radar, because that might be coming, or, or whatever, those kinds of input things. And I felt like they kind of happened during the process, but, I mean, if people feel differently, um, you know, speak up. But I, that's how I kind of thought we already did it, so.
Derek?
And I don't disagree with you, that, that is kind of a mechanism of how this works, but I, you know, with things like the newly formed sustain, I mean, the transportation kind of really ties directly into the capital plan. Things like the sustainability committee on their face, I mean, their mission's a, a little bit more abstract, it's not just straight transportation. It, I mean, it covers a lot of ground, so I, I, I don't get the impression that probably a lot of the people within that committee have even seen the capital improvement plan. And if they haven't, eh, I mean, just in a meeting, and eh, like, with, with the timeline that I was laying out there with the draft getting, I mean, it doesn't even necessarily, they don't necessarily even need to see the draft capital plan for us to approve prior to it. I mean, they could easily look at the 2023 one to get an idea of what 2024 is going to look like, and kind of make general recommendations of there. So the timeline on this, I, I feel could be a bit more fluid than how it, you know, how it's listed out within the entire budget process. Um, but, I mean, the park board would be another one where it's, I mean, I'm sure they have an idea what's on the capital plan, or at least one would hope. But, uh, some of the newer committees, the sustainability, the DEI committee, I mean, those aren't as cut and dried, this is what we need. They kind of encompass a lot, so I think just having them look at it would be a good way to go.
And, uh, to, to that point, there are some committees that are seeing the CIP for the areas that they're responsible for. So the park board does see the draft CIP, um, and there is a, a recommendation that comes to the board. So you're seeing the park board's, um, recommendation when, when you see that in the CIP. Um, the library board would certainly be another one that talks about, um, stuff within their purview. The planning commission doesn't really have any, uh, usually wouldn't typically have anything, but the comprehensive plan update this year, which was a, a higher cost to get item, that made it through, um, their process. When we were looking at the CIP last year, so they reviewed that, and that was included in the plan. So there is some element of that that's going on, um, topic specific. Um, so I guess, if, if that's something we want to go to in terms of referring it to boards, other boards and committees, commissions, I guess we would just need to know which, which ones.
Can I ask Derek a question?
Please.
Uh, so, so my question, Derek, is do you, do you definitely want it to be seen by all committees? Or, or do you just want to say, well, certain committees might not see it otherwise, and you just want to designate that certain committees see it? What's your thought?
Well, like Martin said, I mean, a lot of the ones with, with the library board, the park board, they're, they're, they're already seeing it. It's more the ones that don't necessarily, the, the DEI committee, the sustainability committee, some of those things where their, their purview kind of fits within those realms, but doesn't really have a specific objective within the capital improvement plan. So, getting those, tho, those two in particular involved would, I would think, be a, a beginning step. And if we want to look at, eh, I mean, transportation committee, too, you're already kind of there, but to have it within an agenda somewhere, I think, might be beneficial.
Um, so with the intent to do that, we'd present this information to them, and then we're, we're going to provide a comment period?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, yes, the comment period, what, if they'd like to see items moved forward, backward, and then have it go through the staff, and, and I guess brought back to the village board for consideration. And I do understand your point, with, that's a lot of people to, to, uh, be looking at, but I think with the capital improvement plan, that's the, I mean, it's a huge dollar amount for seven people to decide where it goes, or, I mean, and then ultimately, it's the staff as well. I, you know, it would be nice to get some more input, because people don't necessarily attend these meetings to give that input at the time.
I, I would just reiterate my concerns about staff time, um, how it might affect the timeline. Um, and actually, and I, I would also add to that, this information is, is available to the public. Those that are interested, be the, uh, a committee or otherwise, uh, can certainly make their, their thoughts known. And when we ask people to serve on committees, we don't say, I know, by the way, we want you to improve, to, uh, review the capital improvement plan or the next year's budget. Some people might find that a little off putting. So, clearly, I'm not comfortable with this idea. Jay, Jason?
So, um, what I'm hearing is a, a concern, especially for the newer committees, that would have larger portions of the, uh, of work in the CIP. A, and I, I am concerned. So, so what if instead of making a process policy change, we, we simply made a note um, for 2024 and 2025? Hey, let's talk about, at these committee meetings in January, February, at the sustainability committee, what capital projects we want to look at, and then Lynn, you're the, the, eh, the, the village board liaison, correct? Or you were?
Yeah, I was.
You were, okay, so then, then they'd say, okay, Lynn, when the village board goes over this, would you please bring these things up? A, and letting it go that way for the first, especially for the newer, newer groups. Would, would that?
Well, I, I, I mean, I think that's something a village board member could do on their own volition, not necessarily, we need to make it a policy.
Well, no, I'm not saying it should be a policy, I'm just saying with, with that, I mean, that, that, that'd be important to me if I were a.
Yes.
Eh, and, and I'm assuming everybody here, so if we made that, um, a point of emphasis in, in our minds over the next couple of years, would that, that take care of this without actually making a policy and making things a little more hairy?
Hmm, Derek?
Let's come back to my earlier point, we're all temporary placeholders here, but eh, if this is something that the rest of the board is not interested in, this is not a hill I'm willing to die on, so ultimately, I would, I would like to get it to, to some of these committees to look at it, in particular, the sustainability and DEI committee. But eh, again, if there's not a will by the rest of the board to do it. Is that true?
Amanda?
Um, yeah, it's not, it's not that I don't like the idea, let me just say that, uh, it's solid. But, um, when I, you know, having just renewed the transportation committee, for example. Um, you know, we outlined very specifically what the committee was formed to do, and all the tasks that we can do. And, you know, there's a scope of thing we were, but I, I don't know that reviewing a CIP or, or that part of it is, is within the scope, I guess, so I wouldn't, you know, eh, if, if it falls within the scope of, uh, things that a committee is tasked with doing, I'm, I'm fine with it. But I just don't, like, transportation, I don't think it would necessarily.
So I guess my question to you would be then, as far as the sustainability, uh, committee goes, I, I see plenty of room for overlap there. Where these things are intertwined with trying to cut greenhouse emissions, as we're looking at all sorts of equipment. I see the over, overlap there, but again, if I'm the only one that wants, wants this to go forward, then that's.
Lynn?
So, because this, oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? Um, because sustainability is brought up, maybe a, a stopgap for a, the current, um, situation would be to just make sure, kind of what you said, Amanda, it would be my responsibility as the board member to bring back the concerns of the sustainability committee. I did not know that when I. know that when I was placed as the liaison. And so maybe just defining that as the village board, these are the things that as the village board rep, I need to do on the committee. And one of those being to take the CIP to the board meeting in the spring, once we have a night, an initial idea, make sure that my committee sees it. And if there are any recommendations, to, to get that on the agenda and not put it in board comments, and then make sure that it is discussed, maybe making more of that ownership on the village board representative, which I apologize.
All right. So unless someone wants to get a motion on the table, I think we can move on.
Can you restate the motion?
There's.
There's no motion.
There's no motion. Okay. Good, then I would.
I mean, Derek, you didn't make a motion.
Okay, great. Future agenda items. Derek?
I'd like to make a motion that we put on a future agenda, the process for getting the village administrator report to the village board and broader public.
Okay, I think we can do that without objection. Anybody else?
I guess one question, strictly just the village administrator or department heads.
I was just putting out the village administrator report, but if you have something else for future agendas?
I guess as a discussion, as to how we could do that, or a way to effectively create those reports, I guess I would be interested in broadening it to beyond just the village administrator, because we want to get that information, but we need to figure out a way to do it without creating a scenario.
Okay, I'm, I'm concerned about that, but I don't want to start a discussion. So, so without obje, I'm sorry, without objection, I think we'll incorporate Tom's into Derek's, right? Okay. Oh, and?
Well, I was, I was going to offer something more specific that, that I think Jason or Tom is getting at, sorry. Was it, I'm sorry, I lost track of who said what already. I'm confusing guys. Sorry.
The guy wearing glasses, I don't know.
Yeah. So just looking at as a future agenda item, in addition to adding in the administrator report again, looking for a way to incorporate announcements, or, and like public service announcements, or, what do you call it?
Kudos.
Like kudos, yes. Specifically, like short announcements.
I have to say, I, I am concerned we're going to sit there and have the same discussion again. But if you guys want that on the agenda, we'll do it. I, I can't object personally, but I am, I'm just voicing a concern.
I think if it's more specific, we might eliminate some of that. That's my hope.
Other future agenda items. Derek?
We keep those as three separate future agenda items?
Well, let's.
Take them one of the two?
Yep.
Three separate.
Public service announcements, and then kudos, three?
I have, so I have, I guess, discuss village administrator report, discuss reports of officers in general, and then discuss announcements and kudos.
Any others? Lynn?
Might I just add that on that, if we could get some legal, more legal opinion, also maybe what other communities do, get some more information to prevent a future, a.
Go to India. Let's go for four, anyone? Okay, great. Thanks. Item ten. Okay, Amanda, step in for me here.
Okay.
Just kidding. Just kidding. Can we do any of these items, or?
You removed her.
Uh, it's on the agenda, so.
Okay. Let's do it. Let's risk it, I should say. Ten A, village minister report, the report was in the packet. Comments, questions? Okay. Ten B. Assistant Director of Public Works reports status of water rate case for the Public Service Commission, proposed rates and public hearing set on Tuesday, August 29th, 2023, at 11:00 AM via Zoom. There is a report in the Zoom link in the packet. Expect you all to be there. Any further comments on that?
I can give just a quick summary, trying to be respectful of time. But yeah, the date and time of the public meeting are in the packet. That's next Tuesday, August 29th, at 11:00 AM. It is via Zoom. There is no in-person option. That meeting, as per PSC instructions, was advertised in the paper last Thursday and will be advertised again this next Thursday to make sure it reaches as many people as possible. It's also been posted on Facebook, where I know it's gotten some engagement and been reposted, which is great. And it's been loaded to the website. So the packet does include a lot of the PSC documentation that came along with this to give you guys a top line view of what happened. As I think I mentioned the last time we talked about this, the PSC's overall recommended increase for our rates is 31.1%. And as they've calculated out, the average residential monthly bill, the increase for that is actually just about a 22% increase. So what you're probably kind of cleaning from this and what is actually true is that that 31.1% is not applied universally across all of our different meter classes and customer types. It is applied somewhat non-differentially, based on what the PSC thinks that each customer class actually uses as far as strain on the system. So one little area and two schedules that I thought were really interesting for those that care to dig a little bit deeper are on pages 274 and 275 of the packet. They are schedules 11 and 12 of the cost of service and rate design, the revised version. And they show what the proportionate use of the system is for each of these customer classes, and how much they are going to be shouldering in the new version of our rate setup, as well as what increase is being allocated to each of them. And one thing that jumps out almost immediately is that the irrigation meters have been, as we kind of suspected, wildly undercharged for what kind of use they are, they are putting on our water supply system. So in the past, people were getting an effective discount for using those meters. And by converting them from what we used to call additional meters to that irrigation class, the PSC is allowing us to really charge them, charge them what they kind of owe the utility, and compensate for a lot of these necessary increases. So what this kind of says to me is that we, we made a really good call in going for those meters, and it really took a lot of the burden off of our more standard residential rate payers, as well as our commercial, industrial, and public authority customers by separating out that use and allocating its proportional costs to it. So timeline for this is that we will have our, we'll have our hearing next Tuesday, provided the PSC doesn't hear anything wild. They expect to take about two to three more weeks to finalize everything on their end, and they'll issue us their final decision and the, the final tariff that we will move towards, which includes both the rules and the new rates. And then we're hoping to work with them to come up with a schedule of implementation that gets this in place as quickly as we can, but also doesn't put undue strain on staff. This is a big change, and we want to make sure that we do this right and do it fairly to our staff as well as to our customers. So what we're tentatively planning for, assuming every deadline is hit and everything comes through the way we expect it, is probably sometime in, starting November 1st, we'll be looking at implementing this. That might shift a little bit later if something weird happens, but that's kind of our preliminary, very tentative, unofficial target date.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
Get my kudo in there.
I think that's a good kudo, but. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Item ten C, Chief of Police Report, June 2023, Calls for Service Report and Recent Press Releases.
I'll just be brief. Everything's here as far as just some calls to highlight for all of you. I'm happy to continue giving you these reports. The, the group that does follow our board meetings, too, I have heard from several community members that really appreciate this information. Just to highlight a few in this meeting, and basically just tightening up a timeline here, Summer Fest was obviously this month. Friday and Saturday nights are our busiest nights for Summer Fest. And as you'll see, Saturday night, June 24th, going into Sunday morning, for three and a half hours, we were very busy. We had three OWI arrests. One was a hit and run, OWI, third offense. Another one was a driver passed out behind the vehicle, the steering wheel of the vehicle, the vehicle running. That was first offense. And the third one drove down Jamesville Street, through the construction area, around some barricades and hit a couple cones. That driver was arrested for OWI, second offense. Again, why it's so important to have planning in place for Summer Fest, it creates additional challenges, which we were able to mitigate very easily because of the planning we had in place. The only other, I'll, I'll go to the calls for service to see a huge discrepancy for 911 calls. Samsung is having some significant issues. The inc communications is still informing us of that, and that's why you're going to see those calls so high up. We are a community, a police department, that no matter what, we still go to each and every 911 call until we can verify for certain that everyone is okay there. And another significant uptick that caught my eye was the intoxicated drivers. Summer Fest has always been in June, but to see that the arrest for drunk drivers more than doubled, seven in one month, is pretty, pretty high. And I, I just simply chalk that up to our, our night shift crew, especially our night shift crew, doing an excellent job of being out there and staying vigilant. I don't know if I'm supposed to say you have any questions or not. I'll just leave it to you guys.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, chief. Ten C, Village Department Head Staff or Consultant Comments?
Real terrifying.
Across my mind, they kind of had that look on their face, like, should I? Okay. Ten E, Village Board Comments? Nothing, huh? Okay, moving on. Eleven, Announcements in miscellaneous business. A, upcoming meetings and events, the report is in the packet. B, Public Safety Committee meeting, a reminder, I guess, a Public Safety Committee meeting with Oregon School District for buy-in to review of school resource officer program, an agreement for upcoming school year set for August 23rd, 2023, at 5:15 in the Oregon High School Innovation Center. Okay. Please.
Can I just ask a question about that meeting? Is there, is someone going to be there to take notes for the Public Safety Committee? Because that's a standing committee, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, just checking.
You have an agenda one oh, so.
Okay, item 12, closed session business, discussion of possible action on Wisconsin Statute's 19.85. Sub 1, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Attendance is limited to the village board, and it is discretion and necessary staff, other officers, and other individuals whose presence is necessary for business at hand. A, deliberate, deliberate the investment of public funds, purchasing of public properties, and related negotiation strategy for future economic growth and expansion of the village. And this is note, the village board will adjourn from closed session. We'll need a motion. Derek and Jason second, and a roll call vote, please.
Kurt Storfer?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
McDaniel?
And Beal.
Yes.
Did you? I'm sorry. I'm, I'm failing today.
Are those opposed?
We're also going to go to the community room, so.
Oh.